Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Thursday, April 21st, meeting of the school board. If you would please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mrs. Benko, roll call, please.
Mr. Rahauer.
Here.
Mrs. Maylie.
Here.
Mrs. Herman.
Here.
Mr. Emmig.
Here.
Mr. Eifert.
Here.
Mr. Delauter.
Here.
Mr. DeChau.
Here.
Mr. Cook.
Here.
All are present.
Thank you. First on our agenda is the public comment period. This is a three-minute period. If you would like to comment on anything on and off the agenda, please come to the microphone and state your name and address. Okay, seeing no one, we'll move on. Board President's Communication. We did not have an executive session tonight, nor do I have any other communication items to address at this time. So, we'll get right into our committee reports for the evening. So first up would be the Comprehensive Planning Committee with Mrs. Maylie.
So, we were, our survey closed on Sunday. They were a series of questions about our customer satisfaction survey for the school district. We received 804 responses total, and that's just for those who don't know, that was open to sixth through 12th graders in the district. It was open to parents, community members, anybody within the Dover School District could respond to that. So like I said, we had 804 responses. We also, it was a Likert-type scale, I believe, how many items were there?
About 80.
Yeah. I can count. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 15. 15?
Yeah.
So there are 15 total questions, and then we also, at the end, offered a, the opportunity for people to make an open-ended comment. So, we received 245 open-ended comments, which is a lot to read through, and so the committee is going to spend the next several weeks compiling those comments, trying to organize them in some fashion that makes sense, so that we can have some more specific information for the district. If there was specific information about a building, a particular building, we will make sure that the building administrator gets that information, so that, you know, they can hear what people have to say about their building in particular, and hopefully have some kind of a general sense to present to the public. I will share that, just from our preliminary data, two, the two questions that had the highest ratings, and it was, again, it was a Likert scale, so it would either strongly agree, disagree, or strongly disagree. So these were the two with the highest ratings that, I will read them. The Dover Area School District sets high standards of achievement for all students, and the second one was, where is it here? I'm sorry. I should have marked it. In essence, it was that they were happy with the communication of events and activities within the district. The two that had the lowest ratings in the Likert scale was, "Students are proud to attend Dover Area School District," and "The Dover Area School District promotes a sense of community and belonging for all." Obviously, you know, we're disappointed to see that those were the two lowest for the district, and hopefully after we go through some of the comments, we'll be able to decipher why that might be and get some of that information out. But, that's pretty much all I have, unless you had more to add? Okay. Any questions?
Any questions for Mrs. Maylie?
Is there a good cross-section of response coming from different?
We don't know that. We did not ask that question. We wanted to make sure that it was, that people felt comfortable responding and did not have to say whether they were a student, a parent, a, you know, building administrator, a teacher, staff member, so that we could promote as many responses, you know, as we could, as we could get. So we won't be able to code that.
Another question for you. Is it the intent to repeat this survey every year so that we can see trends over time? Or is this a once and done?
We didn't talk specifically about using that same survey, but I think that that would certainly make sense, so that we could, could see if there is growth in the areas where there were weaknesses before, so that we can continue with our, our plan for the district.
Okay. Any other questions for Mrs. Maylie? Okay, we'll move on to Curriculum and Professional Development with Mr. Delauter.
Thank you. First, I would just like to thank everybody that has been coming to our curriculum meetings over the last several months. We've had a pretty good turnout between staff, as well as some members of the public, and through that, we have done a lot of good conversation on that, and I'll be getting to one really exciting thing for me in a little bit here. But, but first, we, we start off with, with our public comment, and in that section, one of the staff members at the high school had asked, that since the state has postponed keystones as a requirement for graduation, I wanted to know what we, as a district, are going to do with those students who do not score proficient in the keystones. I guess currently, our, our school district policy is that they have to score proficient in order to graduate. Are we, are we going to keep that, or are we going to let that go by the wayside? And I guess the concern is, if you tell the student that are taking the keystones, but there's no risk, or no negative impact, if they don't do well on it, they, their, their feeling is that they're not going to do as well as, as they could. So I guess, between the board administration, I think we're going to have to come up with, you know, are we going to still require that as part of a high school, or of graduation requirements? So that was the first one. So we'll come up with that later. The second thing we talked about, and this is exciting for me, is the grading policy. We had been working on this for well over a year, and it seemed that, for the longest time, we just kept spinning our wheels and we're getting no traction out of it. Over the last two meetings, we have done a tremendous amount of work on this, and I think it's not so much of a policy as it is a procedure of how we want to look, how our, how we want to see our grading, how we want that to look, I should say. Last, we, we, our last month, we had decided that, we'd come up with the fact that we wanted to do percentages from K to 12, and this month, our task was, how are we going to come up with that percentage grade and the categories? We initially started out with four categories of classwork, homework, assessments, and participation, and through, again, a lot of good discussion, we brought down that we are going to look at two categories, assessments and homework, and we're going to give 90% of the grade is going to be weighted toward the assessment, and 10% of homework. And then, again, within that assessment, we're going to break it down further into formative and, and summative. And we've tasked the principals to get with their staff between now and next meeting, and come up with, what are some examples of formative assessments that we're going to be using, as well as what are some kind of summative assessments that we're going to be looking for on our assessments? And then, excuse me, our, our hope is to put that into Skyward, so that if parents come in and have a, a question is, you know, "How did my, my son or my daughter get this grade?", we can say, "Okay, here's, you know, here's what we use to come up with that grade." Again, like I said, very happy, I was doing a little happy dancing there for those folks, because I am, I'm just very, very happy with the, the progress that we've made on that. And then, the final thing that we talked about was the Title I Involvement Policy, and we had a little change in our, our current policy does not include a parent-student compact. PSBA is telling us that that is, or should be, a inclusion in our policy, so we added that. The rest of the policy has pretty much remained the same. So we looked at that and was, we have come to the agreement that we can go ahead and bring that forward for a board vote, so that will be on the agenda for next month for approval of that. And that was it for the night.
Any questions for Mr. Delauter? Okay, we'll move on to Facilities. Mr. Emmig.
All right, we, we did have public comment tonight, and the comment was, is that more information needs to get out to the public about what may happen down the road from here. So we can't sit back, because the public isn't quite aware of what's going on. I know that a couple months ago, Mr. Cherry had presented a proposal or a plan, and right away, everybody thinks we're building a high school next year. So, that was just one of the comments, that the public needs to have more information on what's going on. We talked about the marquee at the high school. It seems that Mr. Aaron Thomas, who is our student rep, is going to go to different classes at the high school, trying to raise funds to help support the marquee, to refurbish it, renovate it. Plus, we need businesses, and we need the community at large to contribute funds for this as well. Moving forward, which is the, one of the, that we had, to identify the scope of building versus renovation, on May 19th, Crabtree-Roarball will be here to give us the results of their feasibility study. Once we get the feasibility study, certain members of the Facilities Committee is in favor of recommending building, but we want to wait till we get that feasibility, feasibility study back before we can come to the board and say, "All the members of the committee are in favor of either building or renovation," and then the board would go forward and vote, and then give the administration the lead on to either build or renovate. If we do building, then we would need to create a project team, which would consist of parents, community members, teachers, every, people involved to get the right information for the building, and then, of course, you would have to send out bids for architectural services. So, that's, moving forward, that is the topic that had been discussed, but once again, I want to air, bring forth that the public needs to be informed more and more of what this school district's planning to do. Of course, we won't know much until after May 19th. We went over the D-10 list that we had voted on Tuesday night. Mr. Nelson had said the majority of these should be done over the summer, except for the tennis courts, because you have youth tennis and you have the tennis team, so he said that's a possibility, that the tennis courts may have to be deferred until October. And then, the other item that was brought up is a possibility of, to save money on electricity, is to put solar panels in. And now, the recommendation or the, the site that Mr. Nelson had suggested was that we could use three acres back at Crawl Town Site, where our current school is, which sits on nine acres, we could use three acres of that to put solar panels in. And that would go and give us an idea of, we could save on the electricity, but according to Mr. Nelson, once we get to the point, anything extra with these solar panels is given, MedEd takes free. So, but the solar panel company, they would put them in, it would be light fancy us, they would mow and trim, from what Mr. Nelson had told us. So, those are the items that we had discussed tonight in the Facilities Committee. Oh, one other thing. It was, since we are no longer televised for these meetings, it was suggested, because I wasn't aware of this, where we could find these, but if you go into the Dover website, go under School Board, to Board Docs, then it brings up the, the Board Docs, you can go into any meeting, and you can view that, because there's four options that you get. You can view the video, and if you just want a certain part of the meeting, you could go to that part and just play that, and you don't have to sit there and watch the whole meeting, so. And that was a, that was one of the other items that one of our public person had informed us about, so.
I can show you where that is. My button is different than what the public will see.
Okay.
But, for example, here is Tuesday, March 15th meeting, so when you click on under 2016, here is the 15 meeting. This button here, for the general public, says View Video.
Right. So it was just one, one part that our community member was grateful and shared with me, because I had no idea that we could do that, so. Other than that, that's, that's all that the committee had brought forth for tonight.
Questions for Mr. Emmig?
I do. You said that the solar panels would be no cost to the district?
No.
Not even the initial installation?
Nope.
Okay.
Because they would put them in, and we would save money on electricity, and they would take care of mowing and everything else. Now, of course, that's what Mr. Nelson was informed. Now, will that happen? We don't know.
And we have to reach out to the district and so forth, so.
Yeah.
As Mr. Rahauer said, we're waiting for the other shoe to fall, so we'll do our research before we put anything.
Right, no, I was just, I, I thought maybe I misunderstood what you said.
The initial interpretation was, yeah, they, this is actually coming from individual or a group donation, so to speak, so I think they're a wealthy set of individuals who do projects basically with nonprofits.
Okay.
So, my thought is, it becomes a tax write-off for them, so they work with other school districts. So, we've reached out to that school district to get more information, but it's, it's a way of possibly generating small amounts of revenue, or savings for the district.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Rahauer, give anything else to add to our committee?
No, other than the fact that it's, the solar panel project is, if the information is correct, it's a write-off for rich companies or rich people, so they don't need to pay taxes, and they're helping out educational systems.
Yep.
If we pursued that, how would that impact the potential sale of that property, or does that, does that alter, does that change the long-term goal?
No, no, I mean, it was just an idea that we were floating around, so if that was something that we were looking at seriously, we'd take a look at what property we do have. I think part of it is something that we talked about, the idea, the building's just sitting there, so if, if we're not going to get any bids in, on it over time, or we're not going to reduce the price, as Mr. Rahauer suggested as well, then maybe we find something to do with the acreage that would help out the district at large. So, we'll take a look at our properties and see, I think at a minimum, if I'm correct, Mr. Nelson, they need three acres?
They'd like three.
Three acres, right. So we'll take a look at our, our portfolio of land as well.
What are we asking for the Crawl Town, Crawl Town building, and what's the assessed value of that property there?
I'll have to get, I think it's 400 and some thousand. I, I know the flyer's hanging out there. I'll look it up real quick.
Yeah, it shouldn't afford.
I'd say it's right around $495.
Any other questions? Okay, we'll move on to Human and Fiscal Resources with Mr. Cook.
Committee met this evening. Mr. Eifert and, and I met with the committee. Jen did a presentation on the Food Services Budget for us, so just, that was one item that, there's a lot of items on the agenda, but there was a number of items there that we just weren't prepared yet to roll out information, we're still gathering information on. But one of the items did talk about was the Food Services Budget. The Food Services Budget is in place for next year, for us to vote on. I think it's a 10 cents for, 10 cent per lunch, both secondary and elementary increase compared to this year, and mainly, that was being driven, if I understand right, because of PDE requirements in terms of support coming back from them, so it's not really something for us to determine it had to be that. Breakfast will remain the same, cost of breakfast will remain the same. There isn't, some need for additional or replacement computerized equipment there in the food services, along the food services line, some info, some equipment there that needs replaced, also will be in the budget for that. The overall health of our food services is, is good. It is self-supporting. That is a very positive thing to note. That is something that a lot of schools don't enjoy, so kudos to everyone who's involved with that, to make that work. So, just wanted to point that out, that it's in relatively good health. We talked about transfers and budget transfers and fund balance designations as we get towards the end of the fiscal year here. We will need to give Mrs. Benko the authority to make those changes as they come forward here at the end of the year. Jen did mention her desire to sort of inform the board a little bit more about our committed funds that we currently have in reserve, sort of get the, the pulse of where, where those funds are and where we need to, to have those. Am I correct on that, Jen? So at some point in time after the fiscal year is ending, I'll look for that to come to place as well. Looking forward to a budget presentation in a little while here, so, believe, did I miss anything?
Got it.
Okay.
Any questions for Mr. Cook?
Yes, I have one. In relation to the cafeteria, is it correct that servers in the cafeteria have to be certified, licensed, or something?
I believe so, but I'm going to defer that question to Deb Curry. She is here, and I know she's going through the serve-save certification next week, so I'll have her talk about that a little bit, if she would.
I speak from here. Can everybody hear me? On Monday, all the head cooks, except for one, because her certification is not due to the end of next year, will be recertified. Kitchens require at least one person to be certified in food safety. So we are at Dover.
Okay, and then how long does a certification last? A year?
Two years.
Okay. That's all. Just curious.
Some, some of the requirements, though, have changed for the better. They have a continuing education requirement now for all food service workers, right down to your dishwasher, which is, which is really nice. They're required so many hours per year now, which is very.
Thank you, Mrs. Curry. Any other questions from the board? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to Safe and Supportive Schools and Technology Committee with Mr. DeChau.
Okay, we have several topics to talk about. We'll go to the technology, data breach policy. We're still working on gathering up information on that policy, so we should have more for you next month. The main issues we talked about were Policy 823, Narcan. Apparently, there are, is a grant that we can get Narcan for free. There's several steps to it. Step one was to get the school physician to sign off, and they've already done that. They did that on, excuse me, March 11th. The second provision for it was to get a board policy made up, and we looked over the recommended, one from PSBA. We all looked over it. We feel that it fits the needs for the school district, so we're going to have that up for vote next meeting. And, the third provision for it was proof that school nurses have completed the PA Department of Health-approved training. All nurses have done so, except for three, I believe, and we were going to get that done this week coming up. And then, the final step for it was to have the application filled out. It is filled out, we're just waiting to vote on the policy, so that we can have it submitted to get the Narcan for the high school only, because that's the only way we can get the grant for the high school. Let's see, what else did we have? We had Policy 824, Maintaining Professional Adult Student Boundaries. We have a bunch of questions on it, and I, what we'd like to do is table that till next meeting, but in the meantime, I'd like to meet with, with you to go over exactly what the need, what you're looking for with this policy, because some of it's a little unclear on the wording, so we'd like to sit down with you and go over that. Let's see, 203 dot one, the universal health precautions, we're still going, ongoing discussion for that as well. Then, the last one we had was the school intruder drill. Apparently, there have been talks at several meetings before, and it's been brought up to my attention that Mr. Nelson has been working possibly with the chief at the Northern Regionals. Is that correct?
Not yet.
Not yet? Okay. Apparently, the process takes about 13 months, so it is a ongoing process. We'd like to go ahead and start the talking with, yes. We'd also like to do it in the summertime. We'd also like to get it done at a elementary level. There has, what was the school district that?
Spring Grove and Central.
Was it Spring Grove? Yes. They did it in the summer with volunteers for that age group of the elementary level. There was discussion on how they prepared the children for it, before, after, explained to them what would happen. So, lots of discussion on that. We have to, basically, the chief would be telling us how it all goes, but further information to come on that. We're definitely going to start the process of bringing that to the Dover Area School District, and I think that's everything we talked about in our hour.
If you like, I can reach out to Chief Bensel tomorrow, and we'll set up a meeting to get it going, so.
Yeah, that'd be great.
They've done it now in Central, they did it at the high school, and in Spring Grove, they did it at their middle school and intermediate school, so we actually had the opportunity to go watch it. It's a very intricate process, and a very kind of alarming process to actually watch, so. They haven't done it at an elementary, which we thought would be a good practice, and they haven't used a major artery or road as well, so they, they've used facilities where it's been easy for them to kind of close the road, so we thought possibly utilizing an elementary school that's along a major highway would be practice for them.
Correct.
Because now they're not only going to have to worry about redirecting children, but also redirecting traffic and community members too, especially on such a busy road, so we thought that that might be attractive to them, because it would give them another safety mechanism to work from. So, I, I think that the biggest thing that we learned through watching both of them is really the re-engagement process, because you could only imagine, when parents get that phone call, your first initial reaction is to, "I want my kid, and I want them now." So, really setting up the, the way in which kids are housed, the process for identifying every kid, the process for identifying parents, and making sure that's the right guardian, picking up the right student, that it's just not someone, "Hey, I'm at work, can you go pick up my kid?" So, those were some of the lessons learned from watching it at Central and Spring Grove, so it's, it's a timely process, and that's why the 13, 14, 15-month period is needed, because it's really kind of, you, you plan out all the what-ifs along the way. I mean, the, the reenactment itself is very quick, you know? We were sitting there on the TV, and you see a fake intruder with a gun, kind of going through the building, and it's kind of alarming to see kids fall, and so forth. They had everyone reenacting it, and how they took the intruder down, but then again, dealing with the aftermath, cameras arriving, media arriving, parents arriving, and so forth, so it's a, it's a pretty interesting, intricate process.
And that's why we wanted to do it in the summer, to where it could be voluntary, we would open it up to all of the elementaries, so they could get more students into one building, but all done by parents' discretion.
Right. So, I'll set up a meeting with Chief Bensel, and we'll get, we'll get the process rolling, if that's okay.
Sounds good.
Good.
Anything else, Mr. DeChau?
No.
Okay, any questions for Mr. DeChau? Okay, we'll move on next to the Superintendent's Report. Mr. Cherry?
I'm actually going to forego any information and kind of hand it over to my colleagues, and we're going to get set up for the budget presentation.
Okay.
All right.
So we're here tonight to present our preliminary budget to you as the board. I apologize, it worked the other day.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so, getting starting with our budgeting objectives. We took our board direct, board directives, and those three board directives were to address Dover's comparatively high local tax burden, redirect re- burden, redirect resources to the educational program, and manage and control fund balance levels for not only the general fund, but also our capital projects construction fund. So when we look at our local tax burden, our preliminary budget that we are proposing does two things. It freezes the real estate tax rate, which the average assessed parcel of $120,000, they will continue to pay $2,632 based on a tax rate of 2.1934%, or 21.934 mils. The preliminary budget also then eliminates the unpopular and inefficient $10 per capita tax. I'm going to let Dale take over here and give you a measure of our local tax burden and move along further.
Wanted to revisit this presentation that I had actually made, or shown you this about two or three months ago, when I talked about a profile of the school district. The local tax burden that we're showing here is based on what the Commonwealth calls equalized mils. So you can see, as Jen mentioned, your real estate millage rate is actually 21. But when you consider the wage and income tax, and the per capita tax, and for other school districts, amusement tax, mercantile tax, and all those other kinds of nuisance taxes that tend to be prevalent in Pennsylvania, it gives you a better picture of what the residents actually have to absorb in tax burden. The concern that I think the board had was that in Dover, the tax burden that you bear is actually the second highest in York County. And if you look across the state, you can find, you'll see that you're in the upper fifth, the 20th percentile, in terms of taxes. So not only is real estate tax, raw real estate tax in Dover among the highest in the county, but when you consider the entire mixture of taxes and compare that to the wealth of the county, as you can see, you're also very high. So moving along to the rationale that we came up with when we put the numbers together, we felt that because your real estate tax had consistently increased year after year after year, now granted, a lot of that was in anticipation of some financial circumstances, some of which did not materialize, we thought that that was a rationale to freeze real estate taxes, particularly when you consider it in conjunction with your budget surpluses, the budgetary reserve, the fund balance, as we've been talking about. Your fund balance is very high also, as we'll talk about a little bit later. So the combination of high taxes and high fund balance is not the kind of situation where a school board typically would want to raise real estate taxes. So as Jen mentioned, when we came up with the guidelines that we developed the budget under, holding the line on taxes was one of those issues. The other issue that she mentioned was that the budget, as you see it this evening, also assumes an elimination of the per capita tax. Now, the per capita tax is the head tax, the $10 tax that everyone pays virtually by the fact that they are 18 years over or older and live in the school district. This budget assumes that that's going to be eliminated. We mentioned that we feel that the tax is inefficient, regressive, generally perceived as unfair, which is why it has the label of being a nuisance tax. It is, in fact, a nuisance. It's a nuisance to pay, and it's also a bigger nuisance to collect. Very, when we say inefficient, we're talking about the amount of effort that the school district has to put in simply to collect a $10 head tax, which doesn't amount to too much more than $120,000, as compared to your total budget. It's relatively insignificant. I can tell you that in the area of nuisance taxes, there's 500 school districts in Pennsylvania, approximately 260 of them have a per capita tax. So 240 have gradually eliminated their per capita tax for many of the reasons that we're proposing that you do the same. York County, there's 14, 16 school districts in York County. There's about six or seven of them right now that have per capita taxes, and I would think that probably in this next budget cycle, you're going to see a number of those remaining school districts also eliminating there. So that was the rationale for the tax plan that we're including in the budget this evening. Also, I wanted to talk to you about the methodology that was used in the school district to put this budget together. I have always felt that a budget philosophy and the way you put a budget together should reflect the leadership style of the school district, the culture that's trying to be created. And in getting to know Ken over the few months that I've worked here, I got a very strong signal that Ken is very much of a decentralized thinker. He wants to empower the staff to make decisions on their own and give them control over the things and decisions that they make, particularly with curriculum and managing students, but also in the area of finance. And I had proposed that we go to what we called site-based budgeting. And site-based, sometimes it's called a zero-based approach to budgeting. And under that system, administrators are allocated blocks of funds, and they're given control, creative control, over how they use those funds. When we talked it over with Ken, Ken thought it was a good idea. I said, great, what we'll do is we'll develop a baseline, we'll work on it, in-service the staff, come up with the figures and a program. And also, as you've come to know, Ken, whenever Ken thinks an idea is good, you don't wait till next year to do it. You do it right away. So we started actually implementing that for this year. The biggest factor, I think, in a site-based approach is that you purge the notion that spending equates to better educational service. And you'll see a lot of the information that Jen is going to present later on here is borne out in this budget. And by that, I mean that the administrators were encouraged throughout the process to say, we want more programs, we want better services, we want more services to our student, but that does not automatically mean that we're going to increase the budget to fund them. What we're going to do is to try to dig back into the budget and try to find ways that those improvements can pay for themselves. And I must say that I'm very impressed with the way this budget turned out. I think for the amount of, the short amount of time that we had to get the staff up and running on it, I think you'll be very pleased with the results that come out. One of the directions that the board had given Ken, and Ken passed along to the staff, was that we want to redirect our resources into the educational program. So the next slide that I have here is one that I'd also shown you before, and that is that classroom spending per student right now in Dover is not among the highest among the school districts in York County, and doesn't rank very high in the state. Now, is that a good thing or a bad thing? Well, it's a very good thing if you're getting the results and delivering the program that you want to deliver. The only reason that we put this up as a benchmark is that it intuitively, it supported the intuitive notion that we had, that yes, we can redirect some of our resources into classroom spending, and in this budget, we did that. One of the notions that we start out with, that Jen's going to explain a little bit further how we came up with the numbers for, is the idea of a core budget, and that is that the first thing we had to address is, yes, budgets increase from year to year. What is a reasonable amount for that increase? That was our starting point. Jen?
Okay. So as Dale said, we used a core budgeting concept. We used the concept that we wanted to target an overall budgeted expenditure increase comparative to the National Education Cost Index of 2.2%. And that was exclusive of any PESR's increase out of our control. Again, we challenged the staff to deliver our budget with a maximum educational enhancement within that limitation, and they did so with the allocations that we had gave them. And with the educational enhancement, new items in the core budget had to be supported by offsets. So some of these offsets are budget-neutral program initiatives that are included in the core budget. The core budget expands one-to-one initiative, including grades four through 12. In the curriculum piece, we are going to be embarking on a new reading program, K through five, the Journey Series. We are expanding the current reading series of collections to sixth grade. We are reducing our substitute expenses with the one-to-one initiatives and Schoolology, which will give the environment of continuous home-to-school The core budget also gives supplemental support in social studies K through six through journals and other news publications. It also assumes additional special education transportation from the IU, and we are expanding our in-house responsibility for alternative education, bringing more of our kids back into our district buildings. And the two other initiatives included in this core budget are, we are in the process of launching our Skyward Student Information System, and I feel that that's going to, you know, keep our community kind of involved, and our parents involved in what's going on in their children's educational experience. And it also responds to the ever-changing needs of our special education population. Again, you know, all these items that were incorporated into our core budget via, you know, internal trade-offs, or they were cost-neutral.
Jen's going to be showing you later on in the presentation how the numbers actually shake out in this in total terms, that is, total expenditures and total revenues. But as she said, we tried to keep, and we did keep the budget within that cost-of-living concept there, with some adjustments then for the PESR's, the retirement rate, which we experienced a significant spike in this year. Jen will give you those details later. But I can say that revenue is flat, and that doesn't surprise you, I'm sure, because state subsidies, we assumed in the budget, were frozen. That may or may not be true, and Jen's going to give you some perspective on that a little bit later also. But the revenue estimates that we have in the budget at this point are conservative, meaning that they're on the low side. So that the budget on its face right now shows that expenditures are greater than revenues, which means that in order to balance it arithmetically, you're going to have to use some fund balance. You're going to have to use some of your reserves to get this budget to balance. Now, we have listed on there that we're going to be talking about the construction funds. We've already done that at the last board meeting. Jen did an outstanding job of summarizing construction fund balances, so we're not going to be into that this evening, but we're going to be talking about general fund balance. Again, these are revisits of some things that we had talked about the last time that I was here, and what we talked about there was the historical trend that Dover continued to post surpluses year after year after year. So there was a little bit of a disconnect between what the budgets were in those years to the actual expenditures. That has been corrected. We have, Jen's implemented a very rigorous program of monitoring current actual expenditures, so we have a good handle on where the expenditures are going to go at the end of the year. But historically, Dover had been accumulating fund balances from year to year. Now, fund balance is a measure of available resources. Technically, if you want to get into the weeds, the accounting definition is the difference between your assets and your liabilities in the general fund, what you're worth. Dover, in its general fund, as of June 3014, which is the most recent available data that we have for all the school districts in York County, so that's why we wanted to benchmark this. You have two more years of additional actual experience for your school district, but if you wanted to compare Dover to other school districts, Dover's fund balance is on the high side. And that was part of the mix that we thought about when we came up with the proposal, that this would not be the year for us to propose a tax increase. Fund balance as a percentage of expenditures is another way that school districts gauge whether they're having too much fund balance or enough fund balance. Financial analysts will tell you that a fund balance as a percentage of budget between 5% and 10% is healthy. If you're facing some concerns, some planning concerns, such as what you have, you might want to carry a little bit more fund balance. 28% of budget and fund balance, which is what the June 3014 figures are, is admittedly on the high side. Again, that's just part of the mix that we used in coming up with the tax plan that we're proposing to you. This is the same information, simply presented graphically. So Jen, will you give the actual numbers here?
Okay. You can go ahead and, okay. So as Dale said, you know, we are proposing a use of some of our fund balance, but here is our core budget overview preliminarily. So we have right now a projected opening general fund balance as of 7/1 of '16. It's about $14.1 million. The core budget, preliminary budgeted revenue at $57.2 million, which would give us a total available resources for use of approximately $71.4 million. Our preliminary budget expenditures would be, are sitting right now in front of you as $58.7 million, which would then lead to our projected ending general fund balance as of 6/3017 of $12,681,419. Again, as Dale kind of mentioned, just please note that our presented information is preliminary. Over the coming month, it could be refined as new information becomes available on the area of revenue estimates, particularly at the state level. Our state subsidies right now in our budget, again, are kind of the worst-case scenario. They're flat from 15, what we are projecting to get for 1516. So please just keep that in mind as, you know, you're looking through this preliminary budget. Okay. So as Dale said, we need to manage our use for 201617, and our June 30 of 2016 fund balance includes $3.8 million in committed funds for the PESR spike. The significant PESR spike will have passed with that reserve untouched. We started, and you'll see in the next slide, we started around 4%. We're up to 30 now for our PESR's employer contribution rate. Our preliminary budget, again, assumes using some of that PESR's funds at approximately 1/3 or about $1.4 million. If you can move to the next slide, thank you. So this slide here details out where our PESR's rates were back in '08, approximately 10 years ago, at 4.76%. What a great time, right? And you'll see 1617, the certified rate is 30.03%. So we have not touched that committed fund balance, $3.8 million, within that large spike of almost 35, or 30%, so, I'm sorry, 25%. So going forward, though, you'll see the spike is minimal. You know, we go up to 34 in 1920, and then it starts to creep back down a little bit. So if you could go to the next slide, please. This is just a graph of those rates and where we go. So you see the large spike from '08, '09 up to where we are right now, 1617, and then it kind of flatlines out. Okay. So again, we would just like to say that our state subsidies in the preliminary budget are based on our 1516 expected subsidies. If the governor's budget for 201617 is approved with additional increased funding, and he decides, you know, we get the funding formula passed, we could see an increase in our educational funding for basic ed, special ed, by approximately $1 million. So that could fluctuate that fund balance use. And also, the 1516 budget that was passed by the governor did not include any planned con, debt subsidy, and construction reimbursement payments. And for 1516- And for 1516, Dover's plan con money that was supposed to be reimbursed us was $717,000. So right now, we don't have that revenue. We do also have an unapproved project out there for a little over $2 million. So if we would happen to get all $3 million of that, we would definitely have a significant increase in revenue. And we just, at this point, don't know where that's going to go. And unfortunately, you know, it's just the environment we're in right now. Hopefully, it gets passed, but that'll remain to be seen. As Charlie said, he'll go pick up the check for us. If you could go to the next slide. So I'm going to turn it over to Ken to talk about, a little bit about new initiative budget considerations that will be proposed.
Steve has a question first.
Go ahead.
For planning purposes, as far as the real estate taxes, we had an email sent to us last week that talked about new home sales and increased value in Dover town, in Dover School District. For your purposes of developing this budget, did you use the same revenue from taxes for the upcoming year as you got this year? How did that work?
We, what we did was we took the actual assessed value as of March, so it was very up-to-date, or the assessed value that the county sends to us, so it was what they used for their tax bills, when they did their tax bills in December. So we used the most up-to-date numbers that we had, so it would include those increased home sales. And we did put some extra money in there, knowing that there are other developments out there that are probably going to spring construction up here coming forward this year.
Okay, thank you.
All right. For the purposes of my presentation, it is really, these are additional considerations above and beyond the core budget. So when you think about the information that Jen and Dale have presented, it really focuses around the kind of the core concepts of what we're doing. Part of my task on the boards is to ensure that we try to move money from operational needs over to educational needs. So what you'll see here are my attempts to meet that goal. That's part of my evaluation system. So I present to you some additional considerations that are above and beyond the core, the core budget. The first one is considering the idea of taking a look at a contract for athletic services. And that is really the examination of whether it's advantageous for us to have an actual individual who takes on athletic training or actually having a service agency do that. So we're in the midst of kind of working with an organization to kind of do an apples-to-apples comparison as to what that would look like. Based on preliminary numbers, that could possibly bring a savings back to the district of approximately $55,000. An additional savings that would bring money back to the, to the organization is the actual reorganization of educational departments here at Central Office. And like, one of my things that I came in on is how we can continue to streamline services here at Central Office to ensure that as many dollars go out to the buildings as possible. So we'd be taking a look at the possibility of joining pupil services as well as special education. It's not uncommon for those two departments to actually be joined. And in that event, we would be going from three administrators down to one administrator in that scenario. In the event that that would happen, that could possibly bring money back to the district to utilize for other purposes at the expense of $159,000 and $189. What I'd also like to propose is, in the budget, is to hire media specialists for the intermediate school and high school. Currently, both of those buildings are only serviced by a library secretary. And I feel that in the environment that we're in right now with one-to-one initiative, having a media specialist in each one of those areas is a vital need, and it would be a support to not only the students, but also the instructional staff here to do this. Now, this doesn't come, the expense that you see there of $80,000 comes also with the concept that we would furlough two of the clerical secretaries that we have right now. We currently have three that service all six buildings. So in this scenario, we would reduce the clerical support to one. That individual would travel among the six buildings, but each one of the buildings would then have a full-time media specialist in there to service the needs of the students. The second, or on here, the fourth option that we'd like to present to you is, I'd like to support the notion of hiring an academic coach or facilitator at the high school. The elementaries and the intermediate school have supports in them that allow them to work with students and staff, and I'd like to provide the opportunity for that to also happen at the high school, too. This person would focus in on mentoring individuals, also providing instructional strategies, kind of doing a lot of research, working obviously with the administrative team to ensure that the quality of education and support that teachers need is actually getting done at the high school. We'd actually like to propose the idea of two activity buses. One of the things I heard when visiting, particularly at the high school where they do have a lot of clubs, is the notion that they don't have a lot of participation because kids can't stay after school. So this budget actually introduces the concept that we would have two activity buses that would travel between the intermediate school and the high school, let's say hypothetically, at 5:00. And they would be, they would, each bus would be given 10 stops kind of south of the high school, and 10 stops would be given north of the high school. So it would not be door-to-door service. They would be more large kind of community stops where we would get as close to your home as we possibly could, knowing that either your guardian would have to pick you up at that stop, or you would be responsible for walking the rest of the way. Our intent or our hope there is that our high school and our intermediate school then would, our students would have the opportunity to have time to do more organized activities after school, whether it be sports or something in humanities, or even in the academics if they needed academic support. Our last proposal here is the notion of purchasing a new district van. If you've had the opportunity to see our vans or have Jamie drive you around the district, you'll know that getting a good van with good suspension is a critical need here. So we are proposing replacing one of our vans at the cost of $25,000, and I believe that's a CoStar's bid, so that is kind of an actual cost. If you would consider and approve all of these items, we would still have a net savings of approximately $2,898. Please know that next month, each one of these items, all six, they will be individual roll-call votes, so you will have the opportunity to vote on each one of them in isolation.
Are there any further questions, comments out there?
I have a question regarding the academic coach at the high school. Ken, you made a comment that we have people in place at the elementary level. What title do those folks have at the elementary level?
You have reading specialists, you have deans, you have intervention specialists. So you have kind of some individuals who are able to support students and kind of unique opportunities and ways. So I'd kind of like to give the high school a comparable. I think with this individual focus on students, probably not. They would be focusing more on the adults. So comparable in the sense that it's a person, maybe the focus would be less on the students and more on the adults.
Okay. And currently, the high school does have a dean, one.
They do, they do have one full-time dean, and they do have one full-time assistant.
The difference being this would be sort of towards the adults rather than the...
Correct. And this would not be an administrative position either, so this would be someone who currently sits in the professional collective bargaining agreement. So they would have no type of supervisory experience with staff, just supportive.
Thank you. You're welcome.
The activity buses. Had you taken a survey from students, if we did have activity buses, would we get more students to participate, to stay after school or not?
I didn't do a particular survey of students. My survey was really based on adults and what a lot of the extracurricular coaches and sponsors had told me that they don't have, that's the comments that they are receiving from students, is they don't have transportation after school.
And how would these two activity buses go? Would they go like north and south, and east and west?
They would, we would actually just kind of draw a divide of the line. I think what we'd have to do actually is take a look at kind of the communities within Dover to see where are most students living, and then based on that, develop 10 stops either north, northeast, northwest of school, and vice versa for the southern part.
And do we have an act, somewhat of an expense of what those two buses would cost?
$20,000, because we already have the buses for the day. It would simply be to hire the driver and the gasoline. We've already paid for the buses because of our other transportation.
So Ken, along those same lines, you said that the buses would most likely go to where the population of students is the most heavily condensed, which kind of leaves out Washington So I just wanted to put that out there.
Oh, we can definitely ensure stops there. I live in the furthest point of Central, so there's a stop close to mine. My son still walks about a mile and a quarter to come home, but, you know, we would take a look at that as an outlier, so we'd get a stop probably close to that. So, you know, it's all, it's all a matter of routing the information, so we can start working on that. If it's a consideration, we can even do some temporary stops to get an idea of what that might look like.
Is there going to be a responsible person while these buses are out at night in case there's problems?
Can you explain that more?
Would there, would the bus drivers be able to contact somebody via radio should a problem arise? Or are they on their own?
No, I'm sure someone in transportation, either Sean or Mike, would be available because their staff members would be out on the buses. So we'd be taking a look at, I think the first notion we floated was about a 5:00 ending time in which the buses would go out.
I actually have two questions. The first one, you talked about the combining of the two central administration departments. And you also said that currently there are three people running that, those two departments. If we were to combine those and come down to one per director, let's say, to run that, what would that workload look like? And would that workload be overly burdensome to just one person?
Well, some of that backfill would also be done with some support people for that individual. So really, the director would be simply that, they would be a director and/or manager, but they would still have support folks underneath them. So I think the core, the budget includes the assistance of two special education coordinators, so there would still be individuals going out to schools, supporting schools. There would still be clerical support in that office as well. So it, just in terms of kind of an administrator in charge, there would only be one administrator, but there would still be supports in place to support that administrator.
And then my second question, I know several years ago, under the auspices of, we were in financial difficulty, an activity fee was implemented for all our students who are participating in extracurricular activities. And I wanted to find out, when you're looking at our current situation, do we know the, how much we collect from activity fees and, well, I guess, I guess that's my first question, is how much do we collect off of, off of those activity fees?
Well, there's different types of fees here at the district. So you have your sports fees, which are $50 per person and then, for the year. And then you also have some fees that we get for art fees and, you know, different drama and horticulture, you know, your specialty, some of your specialty CTE programs. So all of those combined, we're looking at approximately like $13,000.
Thirteen?
Mm-hmm.
And I guess, so with that, I mean, it really doesn't add a lot to our bottom line. It really sounds that way. And I was wondering, in light of all this, would it be possible to not necessarily eliminate that fee, but at least for the time being, possibly curtail those fees? To give, you know, again, given that other semblance of we're kind of giving folks a break, considering what we have as far as financially in our district at this point?
The fees are currently used to support the programs at large, so my concern with that is that we go ahead and charge the fees, most districts do, and it kind of protects the students from any other fees that are associated with that particular organization or that function. My fear of reducing it and/or eliminating would mean that teachers or staff would still need to backfill for that need. So it's kind of, you run the risk of, all right, I don't have the fee, I can't run, therefore, I'm just going to charge the kids independently anyway. So it's kind of a double-edged sword when I take a look at it, simply because the fee is used to offset the cost of the program to begin with. If the money's not there to offset the cost of the program, the money's got to be made up somewhere, and I don't want that to be at the expense of the child in return for that. So that's kind of, we went back and forth and then ourselves, I mean, we talked a little bit about it, I think, last month, so, so yeah, so we kind of went back and forth on it as well. Like I said, our fear was, we don't have it, teachers kind of still need the fee in order to make the function work. So does that mean now that we're going to add fundraising to our organization, does that mean now I got to charge for that organization? So I don't know if the fee will ever kind of go away anyway.
Again, I wasn't aware of those other speed fees. The one I was actually looking at was the, the sports fee. Can you give me an example of those other fees of what, you said there was an art fee?
Yes.
Does, what, I mean, what does that cover?
Supplies for the program, for the students.
So are students who are taking an art class, say at the high school, they pay for their own supplies? Is that pretty much?
It's for specialty elective classes as well, so it's not for just someone who's taken a general art class, but there are specific art classes in which that fee is collected for. Am I correct on that one? I'm looking behind you as well. I get a Jared, yes, and I get a...
A lot of times it pertains to activities or projects, and kids, they, so it's not easy for the experience with those projects.
And does that, does that fee cover all the cost? No, it does not. Okay. All right. Thank you.
I have several questions. Could you go back to slide five, please?
The rationale for the tax plan?
Yes.
Okay.
The second bullet. It says, "For real estate, tax freeze until reserves return to reasonable levels." Can you give me what that means?
Yeah. What that means is sometimes when, when school districts have large fund balances, there is discussion about actually reducing real estate tax rates. Some school districts have that discussion. And I've never advocated that. I always say, "Freeze it until your fund balance comes down to what is reasonable, and then move forward." Because if you reduce real estate tax, then at some point in time, you're going to have to double up and make it. So I've always said the key to budgeting is just to keep things smooth, don't have spikes up and down. So that, that's the reason that I made that comment there, is, is don't think, oh, we have such a large fund balance, we need to reduce real estate taxes. You certainly could, but I would advise against that. I would just freeze it until things get back to normal.
So what would be, what would be reasonable, between five and...
Yeah, as I said, people have different answers to that. Most financial analysts are going to tell you, a healthy school district is going to have a fund balance between 5% and 10% of budget. So in your case, you could easily defend on a $50 million budget, $55 million budget, you could easily defend a $3 to $4 million fund balance. That would be fine. Now, when you get into a situation where you have concerns for future planning, tying into your strategic plan, tying into concerns about the retirement rate, healthcare, unfunded retirement costs for, you know, sick pay and those kind of things, then some school districts will say, okay, in addition to the 5% to 10% fund balance, I'm going to keep a little bit more, just because it makes good sense planning-wise. Now, in your particular case, you're also thinking about a major building program. That would be one of those contingencies where you could justify carrying a larger fund balance than, than the 5% to 10% level.
Dale, would you think, though, that at 28, 29%, that's still an extraordinarily high rate to maintain for building projects?
By any measure, it's extraordinarily high, yes. In my, it's an opinion, that happens to be my opinion, and based on what I've seen other school districts have, and I showed you all the York County school districts, I could go the whole way across the state and show you the same thing. It's a high fund balance. It's a high fund balance.
Okay, slide eight. Are you doing it?
Make it easy on me, this is...
I'm trying to do in numerical order here. Okay, the thing that has me really concerned about all this, I keep hearing that, you know, we're fine, we're great, we're fantastic, but isn't PISERs supposed to increase until 2025? And if we spend, I thought this money was kind of put aside in a little PISERs account for every year. But if we spend it, then we're not going, or we have that earmark somewhere that we're not touching this, and we're adding to it every year? Or...
It's been at 3.8 for as many years as I researched back. If you could go to the next slide, though, Nate. Oh, I'm sorry, a couple of slides to the PISERs, keep going.
Oh, is that 13? Try slide 13. Is that the one you want?
No, keep going.
There it is. 21.
Back, back, back.
One more. Okay. There you go. So as I said before, in 2008, 2009, it was at 4.76%. We did not touch any, you know, I'm not totally positive when that $3.8 million was put into that reserve committed balance. But, I mean, we made it through a spike of 25% without touching that 3.8 in committed funds. And if you see, the spike only goes up four more percent, okay, to 1920. And then it kind of levels out a little bit down below that. So really, the significant spike is over, and, you know, we've kind of been able to get through it without using that reserve. So I think now is the time, there's still going to be some left there for any spike that we may have. And, you know, who knows what would happen with pension reform also.
Just by the way, I remember when that was zero. There was actually one year when that return contribution was zero. You go back a few more years.
So we're going to be okay every year from now until 2015? We're going to be okay to pay PISERs? To pay that with that high percentage? Yes, we're okay.
I mean, pending any major deductions in subsidy payments, our projections are yes.
We're okay with that, okay. That's the thing that has me really concerned. Okay, let's see, what else? Oh, number nine. Okay, the last one. Now, you and I had a conversation about this already, but you told me that what you're going to be doing, what the district's going to be doing, is have the kids use their little one-to-one. So we're looking at mostly middle school to high school for that, correct? Because that's where you would corral them into an auditorium and do that. So who will be in charge of those kids, though? Is that like a study hall deal where whoever's in charge of that at that particular time will also take care of those classes that don't have a sub and are moved into the all-purpose room? How's that work?
The purpose of that also is, we would still call a sub or two in to support the group. So it's not the elimination of a sub, but if you have, let's say, six teachers down and you're able to take those six classes and put them into a common area, and instead of calling six subs, you can call two, it'll reduce the overall cost overall. So I think that's the overall plan as we see this work out in other districts in York County. That's kind of what they've been doing. And/or they go to common areas. So the library, for instance, where there would be a media specialist or an adult there to supervise them. So there would be other common areas for these individuals to go to. So it's not a complete reduction in substitutes, but it's the need of not needing so many substitutes to supervise the children. You don't need individual substitutes for every single classroom.
Okay, so it's a case of when you don't have enough subs, you would still use the two that perhaps came in? Okay.
But along those lines, you would, if there were six teachers out, you would attempt to get six subs as opposed to being in that kind of a situation?
We would attempt to do it if we could, but the concept could actually be that if all of the information is on Schoology, so the students are actually logging into their system and learning, is it really a matter that they need an adult sitting with them in the classroom, or can they sit anywhere as long as an adult's supervising them?
I guess my concern would be, how many students are you talking? For if there are six teachers down and all of a sudden, all those students from six classes are combined into a room for two teachers or two separate rooms for one teacher in each room, that's a lot of kids to supervise.
I wouldn't think a classroom would be suitable for that anyway. So we'd be taking a look at larger areas, such as an auditorium.
And would there be other supervision, additional adult bodies there as well?
Right. So administrators would actually walk in. I mean, to be, I think Kathy, Jamie and I actually did that as well at the high school, too, where we had, on average, fortified classrooms coming into the auditorium to do coverage. I know Bobby has been kind of sometimes sole leader in the auditorium where she's had multiple classes, too. So the fact of the matter is if the kids are engaged in their learning and are doing what they need to do, that the supervisory piece is minimal compared to the fact that they are able to continue on with their learning. I mean, one of the things that we learned very quickly is if we brought the kids the laptops and they were able to log in and get their work done, they were engaged for the entire time that they were there. So the supervisory piece was pretty simple for us. We simply just had to make sure everything was up and running. Once they logged in, kids were working collaboratively, they were sitting there sharing books, they were reading their stories together, they were actually getting work done. So it was a doable situation during that time.
I guess my concern would be that that might just have been the novelty of the situation, and that you had a group of kids who were task-oriented and able to sit there and be on their devices and get their work done. I'm not sure that you're going to always have that situation with large numbers of students in one area together. I just see an opportunity for some breakdown that would concern me.
And I would say that that opportunity also exists when the regular teacher's there, too, depending on the activity.
Absolutely, but I'm just talking the sheer numbers. You know, it's 30 to one versus, you know, now you've got 60 to one or more.
While we're on that slot, I had another question for good. The first bullet, the expanded one-to-one for grades four to 12. What are we currently doing at the K to three level from a technology standpoint in preparation for those students to get to the one-to-one level? What are we providing now to them?
Kathy and I actually had a conversation about that, and it's been part of our planning with some of our principals. So part of our thought process was, we weren't quite sure if students, particularly five, six, seven-year-olds, were able or capable of independently controlling a device on their own, so to speak. So our thought was, how could we bring them an engaging process? It's very similar to what that one-to-one does. So it might not be the device, but we can actually do something with the classroom setting. So part of our thinking was, we attended some technology seminars. We actually went to Hershey and participated in their P and C conferences. And we began to talk and work with vendors about how we can take a standard kindergarten, first, second grade classroom and make it interactive for the kids. So that same experience that they would get by holding the device would now become the classroom. So in doing so, we're actually setting up kind of a prototype classroom down at Live Elementary in their kindergarten classroom, where we've ordered interactive short throws, so something that you would see right there. Now, those short throws actually have the ability to be interactive. So no matter what they're shining on, that piece, that eight-by-eight area now becomes touched and becomes interactive. So you don't even need to smartboard anymore, you just need to space on the walls, simply kind of what you see there. So imagine that projector in a classroom. That teacher now can make that space interactive. They can also turn it and shine it onto the floor. Now the floor becomes interactive for kids. So we're going to be exploring that. We actually have the device in. We went down, I think, two Mondays ago, if I remember, we looked at where we were going to install it, so we're going to do that. We also wanted to take a look at, if it wasn't the many iPads, maybe it's something that we can do with regular-sized iPads. So part of our visit to P and C is, we actually found a vendor who refurbishes Apple products. So very similar to us, when we lease our products and we give them back, this company actually takes the leased items, cleans them up, and then sells them at a reduced cost. So one of the things that we did is we actually purchased 30 iPads for that particular classroom so that that teacher would have the opportunity to say, what would it be like to do numerous activities with kids but on a larger, larger device? Not only did we do that, but we're also in the process of ordering, and I couldn't remember the name of it, but I just, I say to imagine a large iPad that a teacher would have. So he or she are now able to write on that particular, so think about like a flip chart poster, a piece of poster paper, she or he's are able to write on that. And as they write on it, do arithmetic or model something, that exact image is now on the one-to-one device for the kids. So on their iPad, they're able to see that as well. So that's another piece of engagement that we're looking at. And then the last one for right now is the concept of a smart table. So for general interest, imagine taking your Promethean board, flipping it upside down and making it an actual table. So now, four to eight kids, or up to eight kids, I should say, can now surround this table and be engaged in activities and so forth that align to their curriculum. So what's nice about these smart tables is they already come preloaded with activities for reading, math, science, and kind of the creative arts. But it still allows the teacher to upload activities for the kids to do as well. So it's kind of another way, you know, we always did grouping at the young age, and we allowed kids to kind of go to centers. It's a very interactive way to actually do centers with our kids. So that's what we're exploring now. We're kind of going to do it one classroom at a time. So instead of ordering a bunch of stuff and nothing gets done, we thought we would start with one classroom, allow this teacher to kind of utilize it, allow other classrooms to come in there and utilize it as well, get their feedback, so that we can kind of build this interactive classroom based on what teachers are telling us works and what doesn't work before we sink a lot of money into it.
Tied to all of that, then, I guess the question I would have is, what are we currently doing and what are we planning to do from a professional development standpoint for staff to ensure that they are effectively utilizing all of this technology in the classroom?
Part of that work would hopefully be with the approval of the media specialists at the middle school and high school, is to develop a team through that media specialist to support. I know one of the things that the elementary schools did this year was begin to push their media specialists into classroom to actually do some co-teaching opportunities with them. So it's through that modeling that they can support the staff. We'll once again set up a number of sessions over the summer that teachers can come in and do that. We already have planned for the first five days that we return to school, one entire day will simply be devoted to technology. So very similar to what teachers did when we kind of did our mini SAS Institute this year, there will kind of be a mini-technology camp. So we're going to have teachers training teachers, we'll have experts from Apple in, we'll have experts from Schoology, and we'll have experts actually in from Journeys who will promote their technology pieces. So our goal is to begin there and then continuously utilize our professional development days along the way to support that. I think the bigger picture is, at some point in time, we would actually like to have a technology team at each one of the schools. That was kind of a lesson learned that we found with other districts as they were doing one-to-one initiatives, is to actually identify staff members at each one of the buildings. That could kind of be your technology guru or expert. I think many of us as teachers always knew who that person was. They would be the person that you would run across the hall to or go down and say, "My board's down," or "My computer's not working, can you help me get that up?" So we are going to, hopefully, after this year, take a look at developing that type of team so that each one of the schools will also have a point person.
Is, I'm sorry, another question. Is any part of this included in the evaluation process for teachers as part of the measurement of their performance that we know they're utilizing this in the classroom?
It all falls within the Danielson rubric. So, you know, you can take a look at planning and preparation and say, are you incorporating opportunities for kids to engage and what does that look like? So I think it's easily, easy for administrators to have those conversations with staff in terms of, at least to me, two domains, particularly, one would be the instructional one and one would be planning and preparation.
I have one other question for Mr. Keiki. The fund balance, again, I'm back to that, where we're at 28.9%. Are you able to provide us at some point with statistics from across the state that we could see, you know, the state averages as to what other districts are doing? It'd be interesting to see where we rank.
Yeah, I could use the same databases I use to pull out the York County districts.
It'd be great to have that for the state, too. Okay, thank you.
I have a further question regarding the staff. We haven't heard anything tonight about staffing. Is this budget allow for replacement of all retirees? And what kind of classroom sizes are we looking at? I know we've had a lot of discussions about that over the last three or four years. What are we looking at along those lines?
Yeah, all the retirees, so there is no reduction in terms of those. So anyone who's been retired, the principals have been allowed to fill those positions. That's one of the things that we do, is we do meet with the principals to talk about their staffing and their school, and their classroom sizes. So right now, each one of the schools are comfortable with their classroom size. I promised a few who are wavering that if they would exceed the class size limits, then we would come back to the board and ask for permission to hire. And I believe Marcia Hake sends out those numbers, but if you haven't received the latest enrollment chart, she sends out that Excel document. So that's the document that we actually looked at not too long ago, and we were able to kind of project, all right, so if you had 71 in first grade, those students would be rolling up to second grade. How many teachers do you have there now? So I'll be honest with you, I think our elementary principals are pretty masterful at making sure that the extra person that you gave them, I think the year that I came in, they kind of moved that person around. Or a lot of times, teachers were volunteers to move to certain grades to kind of feel that need. So if you take a look at the trend in that Excel document, it's very interesting to see, you know, every couple of years, you get that one large class. So, you know, so they're able to kind of take that extra fourth teacher sometimes and backfill it in those particular grades to ensure the class size doesn't exceed our policy limits.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Page 23. Would you elaborate, Mr. Cherry, on the second bullet?
This would be the combination of special education and people services. So currently, we have three administrators who are in that. So utilizing a job description, it's called the Director of Special Education slash People Services, we'd be moving to that particular model. So in that event, we would have an internal posting, and those three employees would be encouraged to apply for that because they are certificated employees. They would not be laid off and/or terminated. They would also be guaranteed positions in the district. So we would take a look at their certification areas and offer them a position based on their certification within the district.
The three people that you...
Correct. So, and then once again, I think as I explained to someone else, they would still have support in place. So the budget would include two special education coordinators as well as the two administrative assistants.
But how are we saving money if you're keeping, you're going to keep all three? You just said, find other...
Their salaries would be reduced depending on the position that would be offered to them. So if they were to return to the classroom, they would return to a staff salary.
Okay, I see. Oh, I've got one more.
And that actually would be for a vacancy, which we already have budgeted for in the core, in the core budget, so.
And we know that there would be positions available?
Apparently have vacancies available.
Last night, the presentation by Mr. Phillips. I don't understand all this, but I'm trying really hard. On the page...
Yes.
That page, okay. He has a lovely graph there, but total mills required, okay. So, and new mills. Now, for the first two years there, it's zero, zero. So I'm guessing, this is what I got out of this, okay? 2016 and 17, we're not raising any taxes. But then, in 2018, we start. And I had someone explain bonds. To me, bonds was like a stock and bond, you know, stocks and bonds. I don't understand what this, but I understand it now. So in order for them to give us money to build, we have to show that we have the capability of having the money to pay back, okay? So does that mean that this is set, that the first two years, there'll be no mills, and then it starts to go the whole way up until we have like 5.28? I don't understand that.
Again, that presentation was a worst-case scenario presentation. So the project amount was on the very high side, at $60 million. We don't believe, you know, a project will cost that. And also, it takes into consideration no construction reimbursement. So that's something that would be taken a look at, at that time that we do go out for financing, whether we are going to have construction reimbursement going forward, which it is in the school code, so they are required to give it to us, but whether we get it or not. And it also, you know, assumes that, you know, we could have higher state subsidies. So it's kind of the worst-case scenario of a building project right there in front of you. So it's 100% local effort.
Okay. I had another question.
Have you done the math? If we would receive all $3 million back from the PlanCon fund, have you taken that money, maybe and applied... have you taken that money, maybe and applied it to what Mrs. Herman's referring to here to see what kind of a net effect that would have on that, then?
And we have talked about it. I haven't done the actual calculation, but, you know, the one point eight-four mills that is on there, one mill that, you know, here at the district is a value of one point two million dollars. So, you know, if we're due three million of plan con funds, we could definitely take that money and set it aside, so we could use that cash for the project.
Okay, and that's what I wanted to know. That one hundred and seventy-one, is that what it was, one hundred and thirty-one? The money that we're supposed to get from plan con, you had it on here.
Yeah, seventeen, seven hundred and seventeen thousand for fifteen, sixteen, and then we are still due about two million dollars from a project that's still out there.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know. Is that the end of that, or do we, they still owe us money for that?
Yes, they still owe us money.
Okay, I'm finished.
I just want some clarification on, and I don't know what page it is, I didn't work it down, Kathy, like you do. But the expanded in-house responsibility for alternative education, bringing more children home, can you explain that further, please?
Yeah, we currently have fifteen, we have a contract with River Rock and Spring Grove that allows for fifteen students in either the middle school or the high school to be placed there. The contract cost us a little over five hundred thousand dollars to send those fifteen students there. You know, alternative placement is supposed to be for forty-five days, and then afterwards, they should, in essence, return to the district. Part of my concern is when I go over to actually meet the kids, because I go over in the fall and also in the spring, is that we've had kids sitting over there for multiple years. So, that's one, so they're disconnected to the district. So, they were sent there for an infraction, which obviously violated the code, and they should be sent there, but then they're just allowed to stay there. And to me, that's at the expense of taxpayers, and that's at the expense of students who are doing the right thing every day, that we still continue to send kids there. So, part of this is the idea that we take that same five hundred-plus-thousand dollars and set the same program. So, if we had fifteen seats, we utilize the trailers that are in back of the high school. We hire a full-time professional employee, as well as two support staff. We could, in essence, run the same program for approximately half the cost and still provide the students with transportation, too, because we've also looked at the transportation numbers. So, the thing that attracts me most about that is, our students are still here. While they are in an alternative placement, and they are on an alternative timeframe, and obviously not able, still able to participate in activities and so forth in the district, they're not disconnected. So, this still allows for administrators and so forth to visit those kids and say, "Yes, while you're here for forty-five days, how are we going to be planning for you to return back to the high school?" So, that's kind of the rationale behind why we'll be able to kind of keep touch with our kids a little bit better. My fear is, right now, that they're so disconnected, they don't want to come back, and we incur the expense of that.
Any other questions from anybody? Okay, thank you, Mr. Cherry, Mrs. Benko, Mr. Kegy, appreciate it. Is there a motion to approve the two thousand sixteen-seventeen proposed final budget for public notice?
So, move.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Questions or discussion?
Is this just the core budget only? This does not include the initiatives, correct?
It is the core budget, and the initiatives from our last two slides are not included in the core budget.
Question for you. If I understand things correctly, we would have to have this posted for thirty days prior to voting. So, we would have an issue timing-wise with our May action meeting, I believe. That would not fall within the thirty days there?
Correct.
So, we would have to move that date.
Our recommendation is May twenty-fourth, the Tuesday after our planning meeting.
How about we go ahead and have the vote at this point? Any other questions or discussion?
This motion's just to, just to post it, basically, not to necessarily approve it in its entirety as it's...
Correct.
All right.
And then we post it again in May.
We will post the final budget once it is voted on in May.
Any other questions or discussion?
So, next month, somebody said, I think Mr. Cherry said about taking some things if we didn't. That's next...
Yeah, so, at the meeting in May, we have our core budget, and we are, the initiatives that we are proposing, then, we will give you options, and then we'll actually separate votes for each item that are on those slides. And if there are other things that the board fills that you want to propose, we can add those to that list.
Anything else?
So, Kathy, I just want to make sure you're clear. So, there'll be, there'll be a series of independent votes that we'll do first, and those will be all the additions that I won over. After that's done, then you'll do a vote on the core budget.
So, that's, I don't understand the difference between core and whatever else it is. So, these things that were on here tonight, that I asked questions about, we discussed. They'll all be, like, the extra bus, the after-school bus.
That'll be an independent vote, because that's not considered right now in the core budget.
Any, any...
Those two slides that I did, that's beyond the core budget.
Okay, so what happens with that?
Those will all be independent votes. So, if you decide to, on top of what Jen presented, which is maintaining our current budget, so to speak, you will have the right as a board member to vote on those additional things. So, if you decide hypothetically to say to buy the van, you know that that's at the cost of twenty-five thousand, so that'll be added to the core budget. So, the core budget's asking for one point four million from fund balance. So, you would add that twenty-five on.
Well, then, what about the things you talked about, then?
Those are all the independent things that you'll talk about, that you'll get the vote on.
Okay, all right.
And they would be added to the core.
And then, so then we vote on the core budget after we voted on this.
Right, because then you'll need to realize that depending on what you approve or not approve, that's going to change the final, that's why you do those first, so that you understand that when you adopt the core budget, that that one point four could go up, or could actually be neutral because of what you...
And if there were other items on the core budget that we wanted to have pulled for an individual, that we could do that as well?
Yes.
Thank you.
Anything else from anybody? Okay, Mrs. Benko. Okay, motion carries. Are the board members okay with moving the meeting for the action meeting, then, to May twenty-fourth? Does that work for everybody? Sounds good. When?
May twenty-fourth.
Tuesday, May twenty-fourth.
Yeah, Tuesday, May twenty-fourth.
Then we can go to the high school spring sports awards, which was supposed to be on seventeen.
We won't have one on the seventeenth. We will still have one the nineteenth, the committee meetings.
We never did this before.
We have to meet our thirty-day...
The budget has to be on, for public presentation, for thirty days. The seventeenth does not get us to the thirty days, and neither does the ninth.
What if we move to the twenty-fourth, what will that do for June? Got to have that thirty days, too.
Once you approve it, you just post it.
It isn't due until June thirtieth, so that's the state deadline. So, we're fine.
So, we just have to advertise a change in meeting date?
Correct.
So, if you let us know tonight if that's okay, we'll advertise if you're getting tomorrow.
That way, we can rest up to go to the Scholastic Bank.
There you go. Everybody good for the twenty-fourth? Okay, May twenty-fourth it is. Next on the agenda is the miscellaneous portion. Do we have any other comments or observations from board members tonight?
Yes. It was brought to my attention this last meeting, and it's something that we ought to look at. School calendars, our information basically is handed in in June, and they're supposed to figure out when the events are going on, and so they can get the school calendar together. The problem that we're running into is, and this is just my opinion and suggestion, we've been now for about a year and a half working on the same schedule, Tuesdays and Thursdays, for our board meetings. And at major events in the school, should not be scheduled on board meetings, because, was pointed out to me, you can't go to a board meeting and your child's program. And, you know, they come, our schedule don't come out officially until December first, and the calendar's already made. And my suggestion is that tentatively figure that we will keep going on the same thing. I mean, we can't set it, because that's, we have to follow the rules. But if everybody's under the assumption that we're meeting Tuesdays and Thursdays, then major events don't have to be scheduled on that night, because they'll know that in advance. That's my suggestion. In that way, board members could attend things, and parents can attend their children's events.
Anybody else have anything?
I just have a follow-up to something that Chuck asked about the activity fee. I guess now's an okay time to ask, right?
Sure.
So, I wasn't aware of all the activity fees for all these different things either. My, I guess my question is just trying to figure some of this out. When a student pays an activity fee, it's for that particular activity, or club, or sport, or whatever that they're involved in, correct?
Correct.
So, like, correct? Okay, so, does that money then specifically go to that activity, or club, or program that they're involved in? So, like, if somebody's playing football, and they pay fifty dollars, does it go to football? If they're in band, and they pay the fifty dollars, does it go to band? If they're in drama, do they pay the fifty dollars and it goes to drama? What happens with that money?
Well, I mean, it's not directly netted against the expense account. Those funds are sent to a revenue account. But, the budget for those, for those activities and those funds are still out there. So, we have the revenue, and we're not cutting the budget for those funds, for those activities.
So, each activity has a specific budget, and the school district works with that budget. They make sure that the money is there for that budget.
Yeah, for... It's kind of hard to explain, because we don't, we don't account for it that way. We just, you know, prices go up, those fees kind of stay the same. So, you know, that money is there, was placed, the fees were placed, so it could offset some of those costs, those rising costs. Does that kind of explain it a little bit?
So, we use the fees in order not to reduce the cost for that particular department. So, instead of coming to the apartment next year saying, "Inflation happened, and we had a two-point-two increase, so, in order to make that two-point-two, we're going to cut your budget by X amount." We kind of, we take on the burden as the district in our operating expenses to kind of keep them, like, neutral by utilizing the fees to offset that.
So, every, every activity that a student is involved in, if they pay that fifty-dollar fee, that particular activity does have a budget and does receive money in some amount from the district.
Now, the fifty-dollar fee is only on the athletic side.
Okay, so the other...
Certain other fees are maybe five dollars, ten dollars, fifteen dollars. Guess it depends on which bucket you're looking at.
Okay, I thought that if you were in an activity, no matter what it was, sport or otherwise, band, that you paid fifty dollars.
No.
Is that, is that correct? I thought it was all extracurricular activities that... No?
No.
I thought so, too. I thought it was fifty dollars, no matter what activity you were involved in, you just paid this fifty-dollar activity.
But you only had to pay it to one activity. Like, if your child was involved in more than one activity.
Right.
But it was my understanding that money goes into the general fund. Like, it doesn't go into an earmarked fund.
No, it definitely does not go into an earmarked fund.
Anything else? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to our last public comment period. This is a two-minute period for items on or off the agenda. And if you would like to speak, please come to the microphone and state your name and address.
Lori Seber, eighty-one, Berens Church Road, Dillsburg. I just wanted to follow up on two things that Mrs. Maylie brought up. One, the activity buses, that would be awesome. And I think honestly, the Washington Township students are probably the ones who would benefit the most in some ways, because they are so far away. However, we do not have the population, and we would not have, even if, even if Ronan and Jacob wanted to commute together, we don't live close together. So, that is something definitely to consider. So, if you're looking at populated areas, that leaves us out in the cold again. The second thing that Mrs. Maylie brought up that I find actually kind of alarming is thinking about only having two substitutes for six, or however you want to put that. As a parent and as a former substitute teacher, I do find that alarming. I get that they might be interested in their laptop, or whatever it is they have. However, it's different with a substitute teacher coming in for a hundred and twenty students than it is for Mrs. Strausbach to come in for a hundred and twenty students. She knows her students, the students know her, they have respect for her. It's way different if a substitute teacher is coming in with that same one hundred and twenty students. And I've substituted in several different school districts. I substituted as, you know, in high schools, elementaries, whatever. I can tell you from experience, I had a band group one day. They said, "Why don't you have that as a study hall? Because it probably is going to be too hard for you to direct the band." Nightmare. If I were a substitute teacher and you called me, I know a shortage of substitute teachers is part of the problem. If you called me and said, "I'm asking you to come in for a hundred and twenty students," I'd turn you down. So, just something to keep in mind, and as a parent, I would not want one substitute teacher watching a hundred and twenty students.
Thank you, Mrs. Seber. Anybody else? Okay, seeing none. Future meetings. May nineteenth at six o'clock PM will be our board committee meetings. And that same evening, then, we will have our planning meeting at seven PM. And as we just discussed a few moments ago, our action meeting will move to May twenty-fourth at seven o'clock PM. Oh, yes. May tenth, as we announced, Tuesday night this week, we do have a May tenth meeting for the appointment of a new school board member to fill Mrs. Metford's seat. That will take place at six o'clock on May tenth. The interview process will begin then.
We'll post the agenda tomorrow.
Okay, agenda tomorrow. Okay. If there's nothing else, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So, move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, yes?
Yes.
Oppose, no. Motion carries, we're adjourned, thank you.